Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231. Adequate notice of this regular meeting of the planning board of the township of Franklin has been provided. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Chase, Carl Hauck.
Here.
Alex Karazi, Cecile MacGyver.
Here.
Robert Mettler.
Here.
Mustafa Mansray, Charles Brown, asked to be excused, Robert Thomas.
Here.
Jennifer Ragnow asked to be excused, Gavon Amalola.
Yeah.
And Chairman Orsini asked to be excused.
We don't have any minutes, do we?
No.
Okay, we'll go on. No resolutions. Voucher Clark and in McNally, October retainer, $833.33.
Second.
Carl Hauck.
Yes.
Cecile MacGyver.
Yes.
Robert Mettler.
Yes.
Robert Thomas.
Yes.
And Gavon Amalola.
Yes.
Okay, now, we're open to public comments on anything that is not in tonight's application. Are there anyone from the public wishing to speak?
There ain't no one coming forward, I would move that the public portion be closed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, tonight's hearings, Bridgepoint Somerset LLC PLN 180007.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the Board, Peter Lanfrith appearing on behalf of the applicant. In June of this year, on June 6th, we appeared on behalf of the applicant to obtain a site plan approval to construct three buildings consisting of approximately 1,700,000 square feet on property at the intersection of Weston Canal and Randolph. At that time, when we appeared before the Board, we did not have any users for any of the buildings. Since that time, we did obtain a user for the, what was the 1 million square foot building, and they had a demand for a building of 616,000 approximately square feet. And so, we are here this evening to seek amended site plan approval. Our site engineer, Mr. Frued, has put up to my left exhibits which we will mark into evidence, but they basically show the original approval on the right and the proposed approval on the left. And, in essence, the only thing that is changing is the large building and the parking and associated needs for that building. The two buildings in the front closest to Weston Canal Road, which were approximately 300,000 square foot each, all remain unchanged. There is no difference between the two applications or this amended application with respect to those two buildings. What I'm going to do this evening is call Mr. Frued to testify to go over the changes, and then I have our traffic consultant who will also testify. As you will hear, and I'm sure as you've reviewed the reports, there were some traffic issues that were generated or questions that were raised as a result of this application. Because of that, we have had meetings with the township's traffic consultant. We've also had conversations with Somerset County. We had a joint meeting with Franklin Township in Somerset County. The Franklin Township Traffic Consultant has issued a report indicating that we have addressed most of the items that he was concerned about. There are a few that we will leave for discussion this evening. Somerset County just sent an email saying that they have accepted our numbers, and they are reviewing our proposed site improvements to, or roadway improvements to the county roads, but they have not finalized their decision with respect to that. So, any approval that we would get this evening obviously would be contingent upon whatever the county may ask us to do as far as roadway improvements on Weston Canal Road. Having said that, I would call Mr. Frued to be sworn in.
Madam Chair, before we do that, I have one housekeeping item if I could.
Please.
Mr. Lanfrith, we also have six variances that are part of this application?
There are signed variances. Let me get the number.
I'm just reading off of Mr. Healy's report, page 3. Either new or modified variances.
Well, yeah, the impervious coverage, we're actually reducing, but it is, we already received a variance previously for the impervious coverage. Parking lot widths is a variance. Landscaping is, is not a variance, it's a tree replacement requirement, and the driveway width was actually testified to and approved at the previous hearing. The number of driveways was also previously approved. We have now added one more driveway, so that will be a new variance in that there will be one additional driveway. All of the other driveways were previously approved.
Parking lot setback?
I have a question about that, because I thought we took care of that at the last meeting.
And I thought we took care of it at the last meeting. Why don't let Mr. Frued explain what we did, why we did it? Mr. Healy still thinks we're parking in the setback. I'm not sure we are, but I guess if the Board is comfortable with what we've done, although I don't think it is a variance, I would request that the Board grant us that variance, and it's a de minimis deviation. But I, let the testimony play forth, and I'll have Mr. Frued explain what we did as a result of that last hearing.
Okay, let's swear in, raise your right hand, please. Somely swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so hope you got.
Yes, sir.
Name and address for the record, please.
Just turned it off, it was already on. It's a green light on?
Sure, Robert Frued, F is in Frank, R-E-U-D. Professional address is Dynamic Engineering, 1904 Main Street, Lake Como, New Jersey. You the engineer who testified at the June hearing? I was. And your credentials were accepted? Yes. And have they changed in any way since then? They have not. Very, if you're comfortable.
You're acceptable.
Thank you. You prepare the two boards that are up there? I did, yes. Okay, we're gonna mark them A1 and A2 with today's date? The board on the right is actually the same marked A2 from June 6th. Shall we remark it, or?
Um, let's remark it. This A1, today's date.
Again, what's marked now, A1, with the date 10-3-18, is an overall site plan rendering of the approved plan, I should say, the plan submitted and approved, June 6th, 2018, and marking the, on the easel to the left with A2. With 10-3-18 is also titled Site Plan Exhibit Rendering, and this has a date, prepared date of 10-2-2018. The exhibits have the same orientation, north is generally to the left side of the page with Weston Canal Road, the canal and the Raritan River on the left side, Randolph Road comes across the top of the page, running north and south.
Okay, Mr. Frued, you heard my opening remarks, and for the purpose of discussions this evening, is it accurate that the two buildings closest to Weston Canal Road and all the improvements surrounding those buildings do not change in this application?
That's correct. These are noted as facilities 2 and 3. 2 is closer to Randolph Road, and 3 is to the west side of the property. The building sizes, number of loading docks, orientation, location are all consistent with the previously approved plan. There are several minor modifications with the layout surrounding those that I'll go through very briefly. Mr. Frued, just excuse me for one second. Let the record reflect Councilman Chase's arrival.
Sorry, there was a traffic light down at New Road and Route 27, causing a bit of a backup.
Okay, so again, looking at Exhibit A2, is the proposal for this evening. I'm gonna work backwards in facility number. Facility 3, minor modification here is on the southwesterly portion, there are a few spaces, about 15 or 20, that are eliminated because, as we're reviewing the wetlands, we had to get rid of a few spaces there. Moving east to Facility 2, and that was the topic of discussion with the variance that was discussed at the previous hearing, as you can see from Exhibit A1, the initial proposal had a full double-loaded row of parking across the east side of Facility 2 towards Randolph Road with a total of 205 spaces, about half of them, 100 or so, facing Randolph Road. A portion of those parking spaces were within the 50-foot front buffer. In discussions at the hearing, we agreed that we would eliminate the parking spaces from the front buffer. The proposal that's on the left easel, A2, is the result of that, which is a reduction to 33 from, again, just over 100 spaces facing Randolph Road, all outside of the 50-foot front yard setback. The spaces that are eliminated, 60-some spaces have been shifted around the south side of the building, and the driveway that connects to the main east-west drive aisle is shifted about 300 feet to the west as that drive aisle wraps around. The result, again, 33 spaces facing Randolph Road completely removed from the 50-foot front yard setback. The question that the Chair has raised is, and your planner has raised, is the interpretation of the parking setback requirement. The way we read it and the way we interpreted it coming out of the hearing last time was that the parking space must be outside the 50-foot setback. Reading the planner's letter, it's interpreting that it's the parking space and the backout I'm not here to argue your town planner's interpretation of the ordinance, but what I will identify again is that all of the parking spaces are removed from the 50-foot front yard setback. As with the other drive aisle on the, coming from Facility 2, which is allowed to be within that 50-foot front yard setback, the north-south drive aisle does cross over into that 50-foot setback line. The parking spaces are outside that setback, they face the building, not Randolph Road. Additionally, as we were going through the back and forth in June at the hearing and coming into that hearing, we agreed and put significant landscaping across that frontage there to help mitigate any encroachments that may exist. So, if it is the Board's interpretation that a waiver relief is required for that drive aisle encroachment into the 50-foot front setback, I believe that we can comfortably say that it's mitigated because the parking spaces don't face Randolph Road, and the additional landscaping provides screening and for the activity above and beyond what the ordinance contemplates.
If I could speak to that, first of all, it's not interpretation, it's my determination as the zoning officer. The ordinance says no parking area can be within the front yard setback. The front yard setback is 50 feet. Parking area is not just the spaces, it's also the drive aisle that serves the parking area. If you came away from the last meeting with a different interpretation, that interpretation was your own. They need a variance. Personally, my opinion as a planner, I can't understand why they can't comply. They have 129 acres to work with, and the ordinance is asking for a 50-foot buffer along the street. Within that buffer as well is a water easement, which, the width of which I forget, I forget if it's 10 feet or 20 feet, that they can't plant within. So, and lastly, the purpose of the buffer is not just to screen the parking spaces, it's to screen the very large industrial buildings that are proposed in this development. So, my recommendation is, they need a variance, and my recommendation is that they comply.
I, I remember this point very well, because I remember saying that you had 129 acres to work with, and to not have a 50-foot setback really was unacceptable. And I, as Peter's already said, it's de minimis, the amount that you have to change that so that you don't even need a variance there. What would be the reason that you can't, it's just one little edge there that you need to, to change so that you can comply with 50-foot setback? Why can't you do that?
Well, I guess there's, there's multiple components of the site layout, and we did discuss extensively at the last hearing, some of the constraints on the site. It is a large site, there's a large finger of wetlands that restricts the northern portion of the property. The 50-foot front setback is a building setback, as we testified, as I testified at the last hearing, the building is over 100 feet back in most cases. So, the mass of the building is well, is removed much further than many of the other buildings. If you remember the testimony from the last hearing, there are many buildings along Randolph Road that are at or about, or maybe even within that 50-foot setback. So, the mass of the building is about double the 50-foot setback. So, from a perception standpoint, I feel that the, the de minimis encroachment of some drive aisle into that is certainly mitigated by the building being set back further. An alternate layout might push the building closer, might rearrange the layout that would, in my opinion, negatively impact the Randolph Road corridor.
Excuse me, can you put the mic up to your face so that the recording secretary can hear you?
Is that better?
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
I'm sorry. Just a clarif- Secondly, the, the further mitigation of that variance condition, for example, might be elimination of some spaces along the northern end of the property, which is where the office is, and those are the ADA accessible spaces and the most proximate spaces to the entrance to the building. Eliminating those spaces would leave a drive aisle that is permissible by the ordinance, because it's not parking area, it's a drive aisle, would be allowed within that 50 feet. So, the setback of the drive aisle wouldn't change, it would be elimination of several parking spaces to change the character of that. Sounds like semantics, but it is, the reality of how the ordinance is written and how the mitigation would occur is that it would not change the, the impact from Randolph Road. With regard to the water easement, the rendering does show-
Can you move the mic up, please?
I'm sorry.
Can you keep the mic there?
Sorry. With regard to the water easement, the rendering does show some of the landscaping in that area. The width of landscaping is at a minimum of 30 feet wide, and it does get wider as you move to the south, so we can keep the same quantity of landscaping and type of landscaping along Randolph Road and pull that out of the water easement and still provide that landscaping again, above and beyond what the ordinance contemplates, but putting that landscaping along Randolph Road to provide some screening of the drive aisle in that area.
You could move the drive aisle slightly to the west when you're beyond the end of the building, so that it would come into the entrance a little farther from Randolph Road, and, yeah, you've got about five parking spaces on it, but they could move slightly with the drive aisle, and you could keep the drive aisle out of the buffer.
The adjustment that you're talking about, shifting that drive aisle west, that's something that we can accommodate, but just by looking at the dimensions and the space available, that in and of itself would improve the situation, especially at the far north end. It would not eliminate the need for variance. If you give us the flexibility to work with staff, we can reorient that drive aisle and mitigate it as, minimize it as much as possible, but the dimensions at the corner of the building are not going to eliminate that variance condition altogether.
I think you could.
As the landscaping plan, does that include street trees?
There are, it's accommodat-, well, the street, a typical street tree would fall within where the water easement is, because typically they would be up by the curb near the right of way, that would be within the water easement. So, we don't have street trees per se proposed in this area, but we, it's a mix of primarily evergreen with some deciduous trees mixed in.
My other question would be, is there any architectural treatments to the side of the building to make it look like a little bit more than just one long warehouse that's fronting on the street? Something to set it off a little bit?
Mr. Thomas?
It would normally be a front there, but.
Mr. Thomas, if you recall, we did have the architect, maybe you weren't here at the last meeting, I don't recall if you were here at the-
I probably don't recall, we had that memory discussion.
As I remember, the Chairman Orsini quite praised the blue stripe along the building.
Okay, I remember now, sorry. Okay, just making sure.
And, and the buildings, the buildings aren't gonna change, the architecture's not gonna change, and actually, the new building that we're proposing in the back will be compatible to the other buildings, so it'll be consistent to what we testified to the last time.
How many times I don't ask that question, the building gets built, and then I ask it, and I'm told, "Shouldn't have said something." So, I'd rather look limited tonight and be sure.
Have you, I'm sorry, have you yet discussed the parking lot for the Amazon building?
We haven't gotten there yet, but if-
Okay, I'll, I'll hold my question then.
Right. Why don't we move on to the Amazon building at this time? If we have to revisit the issue of, of the front yard parking, we could do it at the end in summation. Can you go through the Amazon building and the changes that we are proposing as a result of us determining that Amazon will be, in fact, our end user?
Yes, and obviously, that, that's the primary reason we're here this evening, is because of the modifications of what we're calling Facility 1, which is at the southern half of the site, is reduced from just over 1 million square feet to 616,000 square feet. The orientation is similar in that it is long in an east-west direction. Loading is on the north and south side, similar to the previous building. As it shrinks, we've added additional trailer parking on the south side of the building, and we've added employee parking on the east side of the building. Previously, there was, and if you look at A1, there were about 230 spaces to the east and 305 spaces to the west of the building. Now that we know that it is a single-tenant building, all of the employee parking will be on the east side of the building, and that's about 1,000, 1,012 parking spaces in that area. With the knowledge of the tenant that is Amazon, we also have the ability to work with them on the circulation through the site. For the, starting with the trucks and the trailer deliveries, it's a clockwise circulation pattern into the site. The driveway at the south end from Randolph Road is in approximately the same location. It is now a truck entrance only, where previously it was a dual-use driveway for trucks and for employees inbound and outbound. Now, it's limited to inbound only, and it's trucks only. Trucks would enter through that driveway, circulate in a western manner, approximately 900 feet to a gatehouse, guardhouse, where they will be checked in, and they would enter the truck courtyard, where there is truck staging and storage area along that south side of the building, circulating, again, additional along the west side of the building, and finally, along the north side of the building. Full circulation around on the south side, on the north side, there is a turnaround area sufficient for a truck who's coming into the courtyard to be able to turn around and get out. In addition to the dual-loading on north and south side, there are also loading bays on the west side of the building. And then finally, as trucks would exit, they would again go through a guardhouse, gatehouse, and proceed down what is the center drive aisle, which is consistent with A1 that was reviewed in June, and that drive aisle serves that egress of trucks as well as a portion of Facilities 2 and 3. And then it also serves the employee lot that is on the east side of the property. Again, that lot is just over 1,000 parking spaces. Employees will use one of two driveways to get into that lot. The center Randolph Road driveway has ingress, it has also been widened to provide left and right turn egress as you get to Randolph Road. As you're in that center turn lane, there's now a left turn slot that would get into the main employee parking lot for the Amazon, comes across the front of the building, and then employees will circulate through the site. There was a question about the circulation, and we did discuss this with, with your engineers as we have been discussing over the past couple months, the layout. It's a one-way circulation pattern. Amazon has done these types of buildings throughout the country, they're very dialed in as to how the operations work and how to move the employees in and out of the lot efficiently and safely. And we found, working with them, and in their findings, is that the one-way traffic, it's a good safety consideration. With all the cars moving in the same direction, you have less potential for conflict with two-way traffic. So, we move the cars through there in a one-way direction throughout the site. Again, these are employees, this isn't a shopping center or a mall where you're coming maybe for the first time or infrequently, they're doing this every day, so they're used to the traffic patterns that'll be coming and going throughout the site. There is a loading area for mass transit, there are accessible parking spaces along the front of the building, and there are pedestrian corridors, both north-south along the first aisle of the building and east-west throughout the center of the parking lot for employees to walk through the pedestrian aisles. There is also another driveway, and this is the, the additional driveway that we're requesting the relief for, is a driveway directly into the employee parking lot that would access from Randolph Road. Again, our traffic engineer will go into it a little bit more, but from a traffic standpoint, we're taking one driveway and going from full movement to inbound only and adding a full movement driveway, so we're really adding half a driveway from a in-and-out standpoint that traffic engineers review. The driveway at the north end of the property is unchanged, as I said, Facilities 2 and 3 follows the same traffic patterns. Other than the organization of the Amazon facility at the south end of the property, the drainage and stormwater acts in a similar manner with the three basins that was previously submitted and reviewed. The grading is consistent, the lighting is consistent with the previous submission. There are some minor modifications. The, your engineer had pointed out there's a minor increase in the average foot candle throughout the parking lot, primarily that's because of the increased number of employee parking spaces and the desire to have a slightly higher illumination level in that lot where there is more pedestrian activity. For reference, that is from an average of 1.2-foot candles to 1.78-foot candles, so we're still below a 2-foot candle average, which is a rather normal design for a automobile parking lot.
Mr. Frued, consistent with the previous application, we do have landscaping within the employee parking lot, we've, we've carried that over from the previous application?
We do, in fact. One of the results of the increased parking area here is that we have added about 276 trees overall to the site plan. That is primarily within the employee parking lot. That is the result from the discussions at the last hearing with the additional trees along the frontage of Randolph Road, but it's a total of about 276 additional trees.
Okay, and with respect to the trucks that leave the Amazon site, how would they leave the site?
For the Amazon facility, they'll use the center turn aisle, and they'll come to Randolph Road where it is a separated right turn, left turn egress movement there. Again, primarily those tra-, those trips will be moving towards 287, so they'll be moving towards Weston Canal Road. Our traffic engineer will go into detail. As you've heard, we've met with the county, we've met with your engineers on numerous time occasions in the past couple months to go through the traffic, but he'll get into detail on that.
Will the trucks from the Amazon facility be able to access Weston Canal Road between Buildings 2 and 3?
No, the Buildings 2 and 3 are independent, they will operate out of either the north driveway or the Weston Canal driveway, but all Amazon traffic will follow that clockwise pattern that I mentioned that comes through the gatehouse and up the center drive aisle to Randolph Road.
Okay, and in the previous application, the, either the employees or trucks from that large building could have access to Weston Canal Road between Buildings 2 and 3, correct?
Yes.
So one of the benefits of this application is to remove all of those vehicles from the Western Canal Road driveway?
Yes.
Have you had an opportunity to review the staff reports that were generated in conjunction with this application?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and the CME report, which was dated September twenty-fifth, a large portion of that report deals with traffic, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and to the extent that it deals with traffic, our next witness will discuss the traffic items in that report, correct?
Yes.
Okay, are there any other comments in that report, non-traffic related, that we cannot comply with or address?
No, the only point I want to, would like to discuss with the board this evening is the impervious coverage, which is brought up in comment number nine, and that goes to the variance relief. If you remember, at the last hearing, we were granted sixty point four percent impervious coverage, where sixty percent is contemplated. The current proposal is slightly less than that, at fifty-nine and change. So we're, by this plan here, reducing to below what the ordinance allows. However, in the design development process with Amazon, they have requested a couple of modifications that will bring that impervious coverage up slightly, not above the point of the variance that was granted previously, but we would like the ability to work with staff to implement those things. Some of those are pedestrian pathways from the two gatehouses towards the building for safety. Certainly, in winter time or rain, we want to have a safe pedestrian path to get there. The second have to do with in and around the trailer parking having appropriate, again, appropriate safety areas around there and possibly having a gravel strip behind that. Again, that would not rise to above sixty point four, which was granted in June, but we would like the flexibility to work with staff to add those two elements that are important for Amazon.
Other than that, Mr. Food.
Excuse me, will you get over the sixty percent?
Yes.
All right.
Perhaps you could, perhaps you could make the pedestrian walkways with pervious pavement, you know, that then has rock underneath that serves to absorb, take up the water that works through the pavement. And if it's just the walkways, then, you know, wear and tear from vehicle traffic is not a problem, but it would reduce the impact of that additional impervious surface.
I can ask that question of the applicant of Amazon. I think from a variance standpoint, though, that would be considered impervious coverage, but we would work with staff to come up with a solution that is agreeable.
Yeah, it'd still be a variance, but it might mitigate the, the board may find that mitigates the impact of the variance.
Mr. Food, have you had a chance to review Mr. Healy's report, which was dated September twenty-fifth, two thousand and eighteen?
I have, and again, review comments, I don't see there's anything that is or things that we cannot comply with. This might be a good time, on the bottom of page three, he does identify the six variances, either existing or new, and we can run through those briefly. First is the parking lot setback that we've discussed already. Second is number of driveways, we have five total proposed, where previously we had four. I identified the additional driveway is to the employee parking lot. However, we are reducing the intensity of the southerly driveway on Randolph Road to ingress only. The next variance has to do with number of freestanding signs. We are now proposing four signs, and the purpose of that is primarily for wayfinding, because we have different driveways that have different purposes, whether they be at the north end for Facility Two and Three, identifying those tenants, or at the south end where the Amazon activity is broken into different user groups, and we need to identify that. We did submit details of those signs. The main drive entrance would identify that as an employee entrance, as would the middle employee parking lot driveway, and then the southerly driveway would be a sign that would identify that for trucks only. And those signs would each be within the one hundred square feet allowed. They would comply with the height and the setback requirements of the ordinance. The deviation, the only deviation that we'd seek is for the number of signs. Again, that would serve wayfinding purposes in this case throughout along Randolph Road.
If I could just ask for a clarification, I think you just said it, but just, so Amazon will have three signs, is that correct?
There will be, yes.
Okay, so the signs and the details that said Amazon, those are going to be those three that you just pointed to, and then I guess the easterly most, is there another? The easterly most driveway would be for the tenants of Buildings Two and Three?
Northerly, yes, would be for tenants.
So that's the fourth.
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
And just for the record, there will be no signs proposed on Western Canal Road, although we will have a driveway there. We're not proposing any signs on Western Canal Road.
The next variance that's noted is for the building-mounted sign area, where the ordinance has two guidelines. One is five percent of the first-floor building area, but no more than one hundred square feet maximum area. The sign on the Amazon building, which would face Randolph Road, is a hundred and ninety-one square feet, one hundred and ninety-one point five square feet. That would be well below the five percent allowable, but it is above the hundred square feet. In this case, as you can see from the exhibit, that building is set back six hundred and seventy-some feet from the road where fifty feet is contemplated. So I think the additional setback helps to mitigate the visual impact of that sign as it won't appear as large or significant from Randolph Road because of the building setback. And the letter height would be appropriate, given that setback.
Also, Mr. Food, if you were coming to the facility from Western Canal to Randolph, the other buildings would actually, in fact, screen that sign, so the sign would only be visible as you pass Building S3 up on top, correct?
That's correct, yes. And with that, the next variance would be the vertical dimension on that sign, where four feet is permitted, where it's seven point five eight feet. Again, the scale of that sign, as it gets larger because of the setback on the facade of the building, it gets a little bit taller as well. But again, because of the setback, the visual impact of that sign would be mitigated. The final variance that's noted in this letter is parking lot aisle width. Twenty-two feet in width for Amazon in the parking lot here. Again, these are the one-way circulation drive aisles. At the last meeting, we did have a discussion about the two-way ninety-degree parking drive aisles, where we were granted an exception to go to twenty-four feet from the twenty-six feet required. For a one-way drive aisle, the width sixty-degree parking, it's an eighteen-foot requirement, so I believe that would be a variance relief that we do not need in this case, because they are two-way. Excuse me, because they are angled sixty-degree parking one-way drive aisles.
I can confirm that, and if you could just put on the plans the angle, because I couldn't see the angle. So I kind of put it in there to be better safe than sorry.
Sure, we'll absolutely put that in.
Okay, and Mr. Food, at the previous meeting, you were qualified not only as an engineer, but also as a professional planner, rendered planning testimony in support of the variances that were granted previously, correct?
Yes.
And would you like to opine in your capacity as a professional planner as to the basis for, I mean, you gave the reasons, I assume these are C2 variances, that the benefits outweigh the detriments?
That's correct, and as I discussed in the testimony and went through each of the variances, or as I described the site layout, I opined as to the reasons that those variances could be granted, many of the benefits of granting those variances, whether they be the setback or the hardships of those variances, the setback of the building, or the orientation of the building to the road. And with that, I think that this board could consider each of those variances that are five in total now, each of those variances without detriment to public good and without any negative impact on the zone plan or the master plan.
Are there any other comments other than traffic that you would like to address in Mr. Healy's report? Can we comply with all his other requests?
We can, yes.
Okay. Obviously, we have a Sewerage Authority report, we have been in communication with the Sewerage Authority, and obviously, the, any approval here would be contingent upon the Sewerage Authority approving this project, correct?
Yes, and we have no issue complying with those recommendations.
Okay, there was a report issued by Mr. House on September twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Have you had any discussion with Mr. House concerning some of the issues raised in that report, you or your staff?
Since that report was issued, we haven't had a chance to speak directly, but reading those comments, I'm confident that we can either directly satisfy those comments or come up with a solution that is agreeable to Mr. House and the applicant in Amazon.
And I believe there are no other reports that have comments, I think everything else we have addressed. The police have no comments, and I think health had no comments. I have no further questions.
Hey, I have a question. On the getting back to the fifty-foot setback, you have a very large impervious surface there, and it's very environmentally sensitive, that fifty-foot strip. Since we were talking about pervious surface for the walkways, and since no trucks are going to be going back there, it's strictly a parking area for cars, why couldn't that whole parking area be put with pervious surface? That's going to be a lot more environmentally friendly.
My experience, and that's a good question, and that does come up a lot, and there are new technologies for pervious asphalt, pervious concrete, things that do promote recharge into the ground. My experience with those are that they are best suited in remote, less-used parking areas. If you have an office building or a shopping center where you have remote parking, overflow parking where it's less used, for a couple of reasons. One is the maintenance and the longevity of it. Number two is it is a little bit of a rougher surface, so in this situation, we have employees coming and going, the smoother surface of normal asphalt pavement is a little bit safer condition for the employees.
We have pervious surface in local park just up the street, and there's been no problem with it, people and children, families walk on it all the time. It's been there for a number of years, it hasn't had to have any maintenance. I think at this point that you're looking for excuses not to do anything about that fifty-foot setback, and I don't really think that's acceptable.
I respectfully disagree that we are trying not to do anything. First of all, we did take great pains after the last meeting, and we thought that we had complied with the requests and the requirements of the board in removing the parking spaces that were facing out towards Randolph Road. Obviously, Mr. Healy has made a determination that I think it amounts to about thirteen or fourteen spaces, whatever it is, are still in violation. So we went from over a hundred and some spaces to thirteen or fourteen, and those parking spaces that are in violation are those parking spaces that face the building, that do not face Randolph Road. We took all of those that faced Randolph Road out of there, that was number one. We did provide, as we promised, additional landscaping. Also, the impervious coverage, and usually, the request for impervious coverage variance, you know, for pervious pavers, is when we're exceeding the impervious coverage, and we've had it with churches and other applications in this town. Here we have a situation, we are, we're over the impervious coverage by a de minimis amount, number one. Number two, the board already granted the variance in the previous application for impervious coverage to sixty point five, which we intend to reduce. So while I think Dr. Chase's request to provide pervious coverage in areas that are pedestrian-friendly, I think to require pervious coverage where it's not going to benefit the facilities operator because of the maintenance and care, and because basically, we've designed our stormwater management to deal with these issues. So I don't think the request in this case is is a reasonable request, so.
You mentioned it was de minimis. Well, that's, we can look at it from our point of view as being de minimis also, so that you're not agreeing to correct a de minimis amount.
Well, I think we did agree to correct a significant amount as a result of the discussion at the last meeting. And if you're that concerned over being a percentage or too over the sixty percent, I think we could probably.
It doesn't have to do with the sixty percent, it has to do with fifty-foot setback, the fact that you have a very small strip of land to absorb the water, the runoff, and I know you're complying with the stormwater regulations, but it's a very sensitive area. And to make it fifty feet, when you have a hundred and twenty-nine acres, isn't that much to ask?
Well, Ms. MacGyver, again, we spent a lot of time looking at this, and when you talk about a hundred and twenty-nine acres, we have, as you can see, significant portions of green that are impacted by either wetlands or detention basins that we have to put in. Also, we are constrained by the DRCC requirements of what we can do along Western Canal Road, and also, to the rear of the property, we have a stream. So, you know, you can look at the acreage, but I think what you also have to look at is the usable land. And while we have a hundred and twenty-nine acres, we don't have a hundred and twenty-nine acres where we can just move things around because we are constrained.
Let me ask you a question, and maybe this is to clarify your response to Dr. Chase's comment before about angling the driveway. And I think, I think the comment was that you could try to angle that driveway down so it provides more of a buffer?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I think you might want to have him speak to that again, because I think if you do that, the intent of the fifty-foot, I think, respectfully, I think Mr. Lanford does have a point. I don't think the, the, having that parking area be pervious pavement is addressing the intent of the fifty-foot buffer. The fifty-foot buffer frankly is, is an aesthetic issue. You know, it's providing, it's providing adequate, you know, a minimal amount of area to provide for landscaping and screening of, you know, industrial and commercial properties. So I think it's a matter of what can they do in terms of realigning the parking lot, realigning the driveway. And he did indicate, again, in response to Dr. Chase's comment, that they can angle that driveway that's at the, I'll just say, upper-left, right in that area. And I think if they do that, that's going to open up an area, kind of right at that corner of that building, where they could do a good amount of landscaping, so that when you're coming around that corner, and you see, that's kind of right where you're going to, you're going to open up views to that building, and that's precisely where if they angle that driveway, they can, they can add a lot of landscaping there.
Two quick questions. One is just, I know we were leaving the question of the two existing houses up to the Historic Commission. I wondered if there's any further report on that?
Yes, there is. Can we maybe finish this discussion? We were there last night, and I can report as to what transpired from the Historic Commission, but maybe we should finish.
Okay, well, the second question is. Well, the second question is, with the facility, is one shift contemplated two shifts or three shifts?
We will present testimony of that through our traffic consultant, who is fully aware of the operations of Amazon and how it's going to work, so that testimony will be forthcoming shortly.
Okay.
There's no one from Amazon here that's going to explain the details of a 600,000-plus-square-foot distribution center?
We have representatives from Amazon here. I think basically, the issue, based on the meetings that we have had with staff, all centered around the issue of traffic. Our traffic consultant has had numerous meetings with Amazon. He can sort of go over their operation, when they arrive, when they go, how they operate within the facility. If there's anything that needs to be answered, or any specific questions concerning internal operations, we do have representatives of Amazon available. Mr. Frude, can you get us back to the driveway issue?
Certainly. I was just trying to do some quick math at the pinch point here is the corner of the building, and I think going back to Mr. Healy's comment with regard to this is an aesthetic issue, and how to mitigate the aesthetics as much as possible. There's a good portion of drive aisle that doesn't have parking, isn't necessarily subject to the 50-foot setback, but is within that area that is north of the line of the edge of the building. If we were to take that aisle, eliminate about five spaces that are north of the edge of the building, take that aisle and angle it so that it is outside the 50 feet, the amount of impervious that would be removed would be more significant than the few square feet. Again, this is, it's a very acute angle here. There's a, it's a thin sliver of asphalt, of pavement that's within the 50-foot setback, but it's over a long distance. So, the impacts on parking, again, in my opinion, are greater than the impacts of the encroachment, just because it's over a long distance. But if we eliminate a few spaces, take that aisle and shift it west, I think we'll get a better benefit, and I think I'm taking Mr. Healy's comment where he wants it, is we'll get a better aesthetic benefit of that 50-foot buffer.
That's fine.
Looking at the numbers, the pinch point here, we may still have a portion of the pavement between the parking spaces and the backup aisle that is within the 50 feet, but we can mitigate a larger portion by making that driveway adjustment.
Sounds good. Mr. Frude, you and I spent an evening last night before the Historic Commission, correct?
We did.
All right, and there were two things that they reviewed. One was the proposed site plan that was, that is before the board this evening, and did they in fact approve, or recommend, or endorse the approval of this site plan?
The site plan was endorsed, yes.
Okay. Without any changes?
Without changes or conditions, yes.
Right. The other issue was that there was an application that was submitted to demolish the two structures that are currently on the property, one at the intersection or near the intersection of Western Canal Road, and the other one further, I guess that would be west on Western Canal Road. Can you indicate the discussion that took place with respect to that?
Sure. And again, that discussion started as this process, the planning process evolved, realizing that those residential structures, residential uses were in an M1 zone and, although pre-existing, non-conforming uses. So, with the redevelopment of the land, the right thing to do, the appropriate thing to do, is to eliminate non-conforming uses from the property and apply for the demolition of those. We did a couple of things through that process over the summer to answer some questions, one of which is we did GPR, ground penetrating radar, around the areas of, and what you see on white here are the two cemeteries, one at the corner, near Randolph Road, and one off Western Canal Road. We did GPR surveys in those areas to see where things were and make sure that there weren't any remains or burials beyond that line, or anywhere near where we're developing. What we found was any anomalies, which without excavation can't be determined exactly what they are, but any anomalies were within the first 10 to 20 feet of the property line. Our development, our detention basin, is 100 feet from there. Along Western Canal Road, our development is 50 feet from there. So, our development is well beyond that. So, we did provide the Historic Commission with those assurances. The second discussion has to do with the buildings themselves and what the aesthetic value of those buildings is. The majority of the buildings on each of those premises probably don't have much aesthetic historic value. There are some structures that they've asked us to inventory. There was, I forget the term now, I have it written down. I want to say huck, but that's a stormwater term.
I know that Mr. Burian sent an email this afternoon, being very specific about what they're, I can't quote it, but being very specific about what they're asking for.
The point for this board's consideration is, and we're agreeable to doing it, the applicant's agreeable to doing it, is essentially an inventory of the homes prior to demolition so that we photo-inventory and map out the floor plan of the building so that there's a record of the buildings that were there prior to demolition. And we're agreeable to doing that, which would satisfy the concerns of the Historic Commission.
Will the Historic Commission issue a written report?
They will issue minutes. And I think Mr. Dominic, who is the liaison, does have the email. If you need it read into the record, we can have that done. Mr. Clarkin, do you want it read into the record, or?
No, only if the board does.
I think we've, I mean, the testimony is that they've agreed to comply with the recommendations of the Historic Commission.
Okay. I have no further questions of Mr. Frude.
I have a question. The new entrance, which is off Randolph Road and into the employee lot, just south of that on Randolph Road, you have a major truck entrance. How many feet are between those two driveways?
That is, and I'm just eyeing the scale here, that's probably 150 feet between the driveway.
150 feet?
Yes.
How long is the average tractor-trailer that's going to be pulling into there?
60 to 70 feet.
So, if you have two 70-foot tractor-trailers lined up to pull in, could they be blocking that employee entrance off?
If they were stopped at that point, yes. And one of the circulation patterns that I described, the gatehouse is approximately 900 feet into the site, and this drive aisle is 30 feet wide and widens to four lanes of gates. Our traffic engineer will go into some numbers of how many trucks are coming and going, but the capacity in this drive lane is more than enough to handle the trucks that would be inbound at any given time. But again, our traffic engineer will go into that, so we don't expect any delays with trucks coming in, especially because it's ingress-only, it's primarily a right turn-in, and there won't be conflicts.
Okay.
Before you move to your next witness, I did check the ordinance, and if the parking spaces are 60-degree, you do not need that variance. You're allowed to go down to 18 feet.
Great, thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a few questions, if I could.
Please.
Frude, you presented planning testimony, but we didn't qualify you as a planner this evening. Were you qualified at the June meeting?
I was, yes.
And did your credentials change in any way as a planner since that time?
They have not.
Okay. Madam Chair, I think we're comfortable with that. Mr. Frude, you indicated that the variances are based upon a C2 analysis. You identified that there are benefits to the township. I wasn't here at the last meeting. Could you indicate those benefits, just for this record?
Well, I think I spoke to the benefits in general with regard to each of the variances, one of which for the signs would be the wayfinding.
Now, just on an overall basis, are there, what benefits to the township come with this overall project in bringing Amazon into this community?
Well, the overall project is the utilization of this property in its capacity as an M1 zone. We're bringing, you know, 1,000-plus employees into the town just for Amazon alone, so you'll have more than 1,000 new employees coming and working here. Again, this is how it's zoned, so we're taking a property that is underutilized now by zoning and putting it to its appropriate utility. Again, from a site standpoint, dimensionally setbacks, coverages, but for that minor impervious coverage, the building coverages, the parking complement that's provided onsite are all within the criteria of the zoning code. So, this plan meets, but for those five exceptions we discussed, meets the standards of the zoning ordinance.
That is helpful, thank you. I have one final question. You understand that the C2 analysis requires a weighing of benefits and detriments. Can you do that for the board, please?
Yes, with respect to these variances, again, I think it's a balance of the benefits, and I'm just going to
Well, let me put it to you easier. Do you have a professional opinion as a planner that the benefits of this overall application substantially outweigh any detriments to the community?
Yes, I do, and specifically for the reasons that the mitigation that's provided through additional landscaping throughout the site, or the setbacks of the buildings, does provide benefits that outweigh any detriments with these variances.
Substantially outweigh.
Substantially outweigh.
Thank you.
Any else with any questions?
Kind of hard to make a determination.
I think That for the applicant to deal with, Bob.
I think
Yep. I can always call Mr. Frude back after the traffic testimony to see if he can reconfirm his conclusions. Ready for traffic?
Yes.
Craig? Right-hand, so I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God.
Yes, I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Craig Perigoy, P-E-R-E-G-O-Y. Business address, 245 Main Street in Chester, New Jersey, and my home address is in Piscataway, right across the river here.
Mr. Perigoy, what is your occupation?
I'm a traffic engineer, been working as a traffic engineer for 18 years now.
And you are a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
I am, indeed.
Okay. And can you give the board the benefit of your educational and professional background?
Yeah, I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Virginia Tech, and as I mentioned, I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've appeared thousands of times in front of boards. I do this pretty much on a nightly basis.
I would offer the testimony of Mr. Perigoy as a traffic engineer.
Have your credentials always been accepted by all the other boards?
Yes.
Mr. Perigoy, you were not a witness in the original application, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and you're employed by whom?
Dynamic Traffic.
Okay, and in the original application, the traffic report that was prepared was also prepared by Dynamic Traffic. One of your associates prepared it.
Yes, that's correct.
So, you were familiar with the original traffic report, and then you have generated a second traffic report as a result of this application, is that correct?
Yes.
And in preparing the traffic report and the traffic analysis, did you have any meetings or discussions or conversations with Amazon to learn about their operation?
Yes, Amazon has a very good handle on these types of facilities. They had very specific information, and was able to walk me through exactly what their operations.
And before you go into numbers and everything else, can you indicate, as was asked by one of the board members in your discussions with Amazon, is this a one, two, or three-shift operation?
It's two shifts. There'll be 7:00 in the morning till 5:30 PM, and then 7:00 PM to 5:30 AM, two shifts.
Okay. So, the, all of the Amazon employees that work the first shift will be on premises before 7:00 AM?
Yes.
Okay, and is that in your discussion with them on purpose, that they start their first shift at 7:00 AM?
Yeah, it tends to be before the peak hours of the roadway, and they have a nice break between the two shifts, a good an hour and a half between each shift, so you don't have that shift overlap. One shift is completely gone before the next one starts to arrive, it works out nicely.
And did your analysis rely upon fifth times that you were given?
Yes.
And would your analysis perhaps change if the shifts were altered?
The timeframes that we look at would probably change, but no, I mean, it's more the volume and the number of vehicles that we looked at.
Board may wish to consider a condition with regard to leaving the shifts exactly as they have testified to, but I'll leave.
Okay.
I think the point there would be we might specify to maintain that hour and a half in between so that they're, they don't, the two shifts don't overlap and overoccupy the parking, but whether they start at 7:00 or 6:00 would not be of particular interest to the board. It's the
I understand
Keeping the parking separate.
Whether they start at 7:00 or 6:00 might not be interesting to us, but starting at 8:00 or 9:00 would be.
Yeah.
So, we're limiting it to no later than 7:00? About what the proposal was?
If you wish. Yeah, I'm just noting that it's probably the gap between them that's most, well, there's two factors. There's occupying the roadways at the same time as a lot of other people are, which is really what you're addressing, and there's making sure that the two shifts don't overlap in the parking lot, which is what I had in mind, so you have a good point.
And for the record, I have spoken to the representative of Amazon, and we can agree that the morning shift will not start any later than 7:00 AM, and if that, if the board wants that as a condition, that's fine.
Right, let's address it all, then.
And then the split between the shifts, that we've agreed to, and that's part of our traffic report, and that's not a problem either.
Yes.
To keep the end time also, but it was 6 o'clock, 7 to 6, something like that?
5:30.
5:30.
I wouldn't really want to see it earlier.
No, those are the hours. We're not, and they're contained in the report, and if Mr. Clarkin wants to include in the resolution that the hours of the shifts will be consistent with the traffic report, we have no objection to that.
So, the workers have a 10-and-a-half-hour shift?
I can bring up the representative from Amazon after we go through the traffic testimony to talk about how it works.
Yes, please.
Presumably, they get some breaks in there.
Yeah. Also, Mr. Perigoy, in discussing this matter with Amazon, and based on your, the plans that were prepared in your analysis, what numbers of employees were you given working at this facility?
They will have, they have two seasons, a peak season and a non-peak season. The non-peak season is January through October, and then the peak season, November, December, obviously, for the holiday time periods. That not, and we looked at both of those in our traffic report. The non-peak season, they anticipate 550 employees per shift, and in the peak season, 675 employees per shift.
And in doing your report, you looked at both of those numbers, is that correct?
Yes.
And you also reviewed the onsite circulation of parking and the adequacy of parking based on those numbers, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Now, in preparing your report, you heard my opening remarks in that we've had a discussion with the township traffic consultant. We had a We had a meeting with the county traffic engineer. We had a joint meeting with them concerning this project, did we not?
We did. We've been working very closely with your board professionals and with the county every step of the way as we've put this together.
Okay.
See, it's resulted in a pretty large report.
Okay, and in preparing the report based on requests, can you indicate to the board what intersections you were asked to analyze and review in conjunction with this project?
Yeah, absolutely. This is a pretty extensive analysis in terms of the number of intersections. We go on Weston Canal Road from, all the way at the 287 ramps, the twin signals there. Cotton Tail is the next signal to the south, and Appcar Drive, it's an unsignaled kind of a L-shaped driveway, or L-shaped roadway. Weston Canal and Randolph, obviously right at our corner, and then Weston Canal and Schoolhouse is the next signal farther down. Then along Randolph Road, obviously our site driveways, Appcar, Appcar Drive, Pierce Street, and then all the way down to the end of Randolph is Schoolhouse Road. So very comprehensive look at all the key intersections that are gonna be...
Okay, and in doing your report, you did traffic counts at all of those intersections?
We did. We looked at the weekday morning and weekday evening peak times. We did 6:30 to 9:30 in the morning and 4:30 to 6:30 in the evening.
Okay, and by doing the 6:30 to 9:30, you started that early because you wanted to incorporate our start hours with the existing traffic on the roadways, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Because normal traffic studies don't usually run from 6:30 in the morning forward, is that correct?
Correct, yes, usually it's seven to nine.
Okay, and the same thing, you extended the evening peak hour analysis to address our shifts, is that correct?
Correct. We wanted to capture both Amazon's peak times and the roadway peak times and see how they compare.
Okay, and in addition to that, you did an investigation as to all other projects in the vicinity of the subject application that are either under construction or have been approved for construction, and incorporated all of that information in your analysis?
Yes, we did. There were a number of developments, one, two, three, four, five, four warehouse developments, the expansion of the Canal Walk community and the Summer Fields community. And we also add, just based on New Jersey DOT data, 1.75% background growth to our existing volumes to bump those up. So looking at general regional growth and all those specific developments that are in the vicinity have all been incorporated into this report.
So the 1.75 is your build factor?
1.75% times two years to the existing volumes, then on top of that, we added all these other developments.
Okay, thank you.
And in addition, were you given some direction from the county and also from the Franklin Township traffic consultant as to what they wanted you to analyze and look at?
Yes, absolutely. This entire study, like I said, we've been working very closely with them, with your professionals and with the county to arrive at, I think, a pretty conservative assessment. We pointed out earlier that, you know, the Amazon shifts are not at the typical peak time periods. We assume that all those other developments that we looked at, it's, like I said, it's four warehouses, Canal Walk. We assume that those peak at the same time as Amazon, so a little bit conservative of a look at the future condition.
Okay, and can you take the board through what your findings were with respect to the study? I don't, I don't know if the board really wants to hear levels of service at every single intersection, but basically just...
I hope not.
But basically, give the board an overview of what your findings and conclusions were.
Sure. Again, as I mentioned, we tried to be as conservative as possible. We wanted to look at a worst-case scenario because it's in everybody's interest that this work and that we're successful here. We looked at that peak season, so the two months a year when they had the highest employees, that was sort of what we wanted to make sure would function adequately. And we've identified some improvements that can be done in some ways to better facilitate our site traffic beyond, beyond just the site driveways. The first location would be the Weston Canal Road and Randolph intersection. Recently, it was a signalized intersection, but it wasn't obviously anticipating this, this level of traffic. So what we're gonna do is make improvements to that intersection. We're gonna extend the left turn lane on Weston Canal Road to accommodate the largest queue from the peak time of Amazon's operation. So we pull that traffic volume out of Weston Canal Road. It's not gonna clog that up. And we're also gonna modify the traffic signal and the radius to the right turn from Randolph onto Weston Canal so that when the left turn green arrow essentially is on for Weston Canal, the right turn can run out of Randolph Road. So it's, that's set up that way at Cotton Tail now, if you're familiar with that intersection. When the left arrow is on, there's a right turn arrow. That really frees up a lot of capacity at that intersection, and we're gonna make that improvement. And like I said, that's gonna mitigate the peak shift change for Amazon. But those improvements are gonna be out there. We're not gonna take the signal down when Amazon's not working.
How long is...
So it's gonna benefit everybody, everybody all day.
How long is the queue lane, that left turn queue lane from Weston onto Randolph gonna be?
It'll be 550 feet long. A very nice, long turn lane, and again, it's to accommodate that, that peak time. If we're gonna go do the, do the, do the work, we wanna make sure that it works all year. And again, it's gonna be an improvement for everybody who uses that intersection all day. It's really necessary for Amazon's peak time operation. So that's one location. The other location is the other end of Randolph Road and Schoolhouse. Best way to mitigate that is to signalize that intersection. Obviously, we need to show that a signal is needed. They'll have to prepare a traffic signal warrant report. We believe that it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be a big improvement, just knowing the area myself. My father-in-law lives in Canal Walk, so I go through that all the time. It's a difficult movement to get out of Schoolhouse onto Randolph. So I think, again, it's gonna help not only day-to-day traffic, but it's gonna more than accommodate that peak volume from Amazon. The intersection of Schoolhouse and Weston Canal, traffic signal timing changes at that intersection are actually gonna make it operate better with less delay than it does without Amazon going in. So not only are we gonna accommodate that traffic, it's actually gonna operate with less delay with some optimization of that traffic signal timing. Obviously, the Weston Canal improvements are also subject to the county's input. And at this, at this point, you know, they've, they seem to be agreeable. It's now just getting down to the details and exactly how it's gonna work. The last, I guess you could call it an improvement, but it's something along our frontage. Randolph Road's 42 feet wide now, and it's two lanes. That's wide enough, more than wide enough for three lanes, so we're really wasting some capacity there. What our proposal was to help facilitate these shift changes and getting everybody out of Amazon in particular was to put one, a center-left turn lane along the frontage of the property. When you have sort of a unidirectional traffic flow where everybody's coming in in the morning and everybody's going out in the evening, that center turn lane can kind of operate in either, either direction, and it works safely because of the way the, the flow is sort of one way in and one way out. It really maximizes the capacity of the roadway. In talking with your, the board's traffic engineer, he'd like to see them, that center turn lane broken at the main driveways and exclusive left turn lanes, so it's not just one continuous turn lane, but we'll work with him to make that work. He's also pointed out that there's obviously gonna be a delay getting out. I mean, you're sending 675 employees out at one time. You know, obviously, it's gonna be a little bit of a delay getting out of there. He's indicated that it might make sense to, in the future, see if a traffic signal would, would make sense there to go see if there's a signal warrants that are met in the future after Amazon's occupied. We'd be amenable to do that and if it seems like it's necessary. But obviously, we're basing this on some pretty conservative projections. It may not, in reality, turn out to be as difficult as maybe this analysis shows. So obviously, something that we'd be willing to look, look, look to do after they're operational.
Just, just to clarify that comment, so what you're saying is our traffic engineer recommended that the main drive, the main driveway for Amazon?
Yes.
That perhaps six months after the CO, six months after it's occupied, there would be an analysis to see if a traffic light is warranted at that driveway? Is that, is that...
Yeah, I, I think the time may not be six months. I think what you need to do is get the facility, A, built, B, fully staffed, and actually do the warrant analysis in...
Some, some amount of time after.
In November and December when they have their peak employees. In discussing it with Amazon yesterday, we were thinking probably in November, December of 2020 or somewhere around that time, which will allow for the construction of the facility, staffing, and getting their peak numbers. But we can work out a date, but yeah, it, it should be done when the building is fully operational.
Okay, and your client is agreeing, would agree as a condition of the board approval to, to do that analysis? And if the analysis proves that there's, the warrants are there for a light, that they would construct that light?
Yes, well, I would say if, if the intersection is operating acceptably, whether or not a warrant is met, obviously, there's no need to put a traffic signal in there. So maybe not just if a warrant is met, but if there's an issue, if there's congestion and delay getting out and the warrants are met. It's not just magically throw up a traffic signal because the warrants are met if, if people are getting in and out just fine.
Okay, what we can do is if, in the, the language of the resolution, we can figure out the right language.
Exactly, that's, that's what I wanna point out.
Just the concern I have on that issue is you're gonna continuously have additional build volumes. So, you know, at what point, you know, you may not have the warrants for it in 2020, but you may have it two years later.
Oh, i- if there's additional development and Randolph gets busier, well, I mean, that...
Yeah, but that, but that won't be caused by their development. That'd be caused by regional growth, not...
Yeah.
I, I think, I think, I think it's, I think it's a good comment, and I think the board's condition about the, you know, the timing of the shift changes, because that is something related to their operation. I think that covers that side, and then the, you know, again, I, I think if it's, if, if, if overall traffic conditions change outside of Amazon's operation, Amazon, Amazon can't be on the hook for that.
Yeah, and, and the other thing is, I mean...
Not that Mr. Clarken, you were suggesting that, but...
But what about some sort of a prorata obligation? I'm just throwing it out. I'll leave it to you to...
But the problem, Mr. Clarken, to be honest, if, if there is a problem on Randolph Road, it's a problem that's suffered by our employees leaving the site. It's, it's not a problem for the everyday motorists that uses Randolph Road. They have still free and unfettered access to use Randolphville Road, whether or not Amazon was there, that doesn't change. What, what changes as a result of this project, as, as Mr. Perigoy indicates, is that there will be some sort of a delay of our employees being able to exit the site onto Randolph Road. And if, if that is the case, you know, we will put up a traffic signal to assist in that. But if there's other traffic that's caused by something else, that should not be on our dime.
It gives rise to one more question. Is there potential for the number of employees per shift to increase?
That would be a question for Amazon, but I will point out just, just a couple of things. The signal going there would only be for the benefit of Amazon. I mean, it's not something that's gonna be anything to the benefit of, of Randolph Road. It'll, right now, it's free flow and you'll have the opportunity to stop there, so obviously, it's only to the benefit of Amazon. And the second thing that I should have pointed out earlier, we've looked at this assuming that 675 employees, that they all show up every day and they all drive in a single car. Obviously, there's gonna be some carpooling. There's gonna be some mass transit. You know, they're looking to potentially get a, one of the local jitney bus services to, to stop here. So we looked, and also, nobody's gonna call out sick or miss work. So obviously, this is looking at the absolute worst-case scenario. So there is that flexibility if the employee count in the future had to increase, which I, you know, I don't believe that's the intent. But if it, if it were, these numbers are conservative and that's sort of built in.
I have a question, because I haven't heard you. You went through all the intersections you were told.
Yes.
Study with one exception, that's the exit 12.
No, we didn't. We looked at the...
I know, but you didn't give any report.
Oh, yes, we, that intersection will continue to operate at acceptable levels of service, at an E or better during that worst-case peak season, the worst-case scenario.
Okay, I got a problem with that because I travel there every day between four and six. I asked this before in connection with other, a couple of other applications. Do you have any discussions with the county about their intentions? For instance, if I'm coming from your site to 287 and I get to the first light, people, it's a fact of life use, all right? People going south on 287 line up in the shoulder.
On, in advance of...
People who are going north take the regular lane, and it's only a one-lane road each way. I would think a minimum, that's something that the county or Amazon should be doing, is restriping it. Because you, you gotta call it what it is, because there's a lot of traffic there because you have the Cotton Tail Lane or whatever it is, people making the right turn toward 287 onto Weston Road. I find it virtually impossible to believe that you're saying that that interchange, which does now, is now one of the few functioning interchanges that we have in this area for 287, is gonna continue to function with that amount of traffic. Because as a matter, all the, you know, it's worst-case numbers, to see these people are gonna be sick, somebody's gonna carpool. Still gonna be a lot of traffic. The timing of those lights needs to be adjusted at that interchange. Have these discussion. I can't believe that nobody in our police department, the county, the township, or anything, anybody else has discussed this, because it's not gonna work.
I, I, I can, I know that interchange well. I, I go through it all the time, and I agree. It is one of the few on 287 where there isn't any congestion onto 287. The reason that this sort of fits in is because it's the opposite flow. I, I agree with you. In the morning, people line up in the shoulder and advance a Cotton Tail trying to get onto 287. But the Amazon traffic isn't going out at that time. They're coming in off of 287.
Yeah, I know, but we haven't gotten to the truck traffic yet that's coming for, for here.
That, that's, that's all included in this study, the truck traffic as well.
And you're saying all the trucks running, all their deliveries and pickups, along with all the employees, are gonna still be able to function through that interchange as it exists today?
Yes.
Can't happen. Cannot happen. And I, I don't, I'm sorry, I'm not a traffic expert, but I drive a hell of a lot of roads around here, and I see that particular one five days a week. Somebody's gonna get killed. There's gonna be a backup. Your 500-foot center lane that you're proposing for Randolph or Weston Road for the left turn on the Randolph is a good idea, but it's getting pretty close to, to the backup for the light on Weston Road and Cotton Tail Lane. Something needs to be done. It can't function the way, it can't function with what you're trying to say is proposing here. I mean, yes, you know, I don't know when you went out there, but we're not morons.
Well, that intersection is included. It's, it's up to the county. They're gonna review that.
Up to the county, but it's up to...
And then it's up to them to go to the New Jersey DOT to change the timing.
Including Amazon.
If that, to change the signal timing there, it'd have to be approved by New Jersey.
Is Amazon gonna be happy if it takes an hour and a half for one of their trucks to get on 287 north?
I'm sure not.
Well, then maybe it should be planned now, not to, when the problem comes.
I think the worst problem at that intersection is traffic coming off 287 to go on to, to turn left on Weston Road because of the, the two traffic lights there close together. Although it was worse before the new traffic light was put in at the exit.
It functions. Not, nothing's ideal in New Jersey, but it functions. Now we're adding all of this. Don't tell me that it's not gonna have an impact, a negative impact.
It, it is certainly gonna have an impact. It's going to, it's going to add some...
Before it's not fixable. What are your suggestions?
The, the best way, the only way really to fix that intersection is to enhance the signal timing. I agree with you, it could use some work, but the county has to make that request to the New Jersey DOT. They control those signals. They're not gonna touch the signal timing until Amazon's up and operational. And it's shown that they need to change it.
They need to call it like it is, widen that stretch of road and stripe it the way people use it.
You, you mean for the, that northbound through Moon? Perhaps, but that's not a movement that Amazon is going to impact. They're not going north on Weston Canal towards 287 in the morning.
287, when you approach that interchange, people line up in the shoulder to go south.
Right, I agree.
People going north on 287 line up in the regular lane. They make a two-lane highway out of one, one, a one-lane road. The county needs to at least widen it and stripe it. Stripe it for two lanes. One is a right turn south, one is a straight under 287, and you take the north entrance.
I, I, you know, I don't disagree with you, and they have that data from our study now, and they can decide. But what, what, that movement doesn't change based on what we're proposing here.
Yeah, it does change. It's gonna get a lot heavier, heavier use.
That movement is an issue, that, that... That movement is an issue, that, that condition you're talking about happens in the morning, it's chronic in the morning when nobody's leaving Amazon. Yes, they have, they have all this, they're, they're, they're reviewing our.
You told them that was a problem, people were using the shoulder, it's being illegally used, stripe it.
Oh, yeah, they're aware, they know.
Well, I'm, I'm inclined to say a no vote until we get some kind of issue, some kind of feedback, that there's going to be something done to take care of that problem.
Yeah, it's not in our control or the county's control, those are New Jersey DOT signals. They would have to sign off on any changes to the timing.
Can I comment this?
Enhance, yes.
Amazon is a great, ratable. It's a project I would love to see here. But I also have read plenty of stories about issues in Robbinsville and Allentown and things like that, where roads were overwhelmed, traffic.
That's, that's a different type of facility than this, that is not the same.
Sure we'll hear about that, but right now, you're looking at a interchange for a major highway, that's a very limited interchange.
A- and there's, and like I said, there's very limited that you can do there, it goes under 287, it's right next to the canal, there's not much you can do, but you can.
Pass these projects that are going to come out? This is annoying, that there's no, come up with some solutions.
Mr., Mr. Thomas, may I make, make a suggestion? First, first of all, we did have some solutions, there was thought that the timing of those traffic lights can be changed to assist the situation, but we can't change the timing, only the county or DOT can. I, I also think that, first of all, we're still awaiting the county report, but once we receive the county report, I, I also think it's, if this is as much of a concern, you now have a traffic consultant through CME who can either meet with this board to hear those concerns, or through Mr. Dominack can express those concerns to the county and have the county look at, at those issues. Uh, because again, you know, and I travel that road on a fairly regular basis. The, the problem in the morning is going towards 287, and you're right, there's, there's two lanes being used when there's only one. But as far as Amazon, everybody is in the facility and coming to the, to the facility at, before seven o'clock in the morning. So, we don't impact that situation, but.
What about the trucks leaving during the day?
But, but that problem is not as intense after AM peak hour. You know, it, it, it is bad at seven, between seven and nine, but, you know, if you drive there at 10 or 11 o'clock, it, it's not as much of a problem. I agree, it, it, something needs to be done, but I think maybe CME, who's your traffic consultant, can discuss that with the county and express the concerns that you and, I assume, some of your fellow board members share.
Well, somebody needs to get on them, because it took them two years, more than two years, to put up the stoplights in that intersection that allowed you to make a left turn when you come off 287. So, if, if it takes two, four, two or three years to think about resolving it.
And, and I'm, and I'm not here to, to defend the county, but, but again, it's even to some degree beyond their control, because it, it is, as Mr. Paragoy indicates, it's, it's, has to go through the DOT, DOT, and they don't move as quickly as we would like them to move also.
I, I think, I want to make a comment regarding, uh, this particular subject. Uh, the reason being that we have to be proactive in the way we, uh, render solutions to issues, right? Uh, this particular area that Bob is talking about is very difficult to make a lifetime, when you're coming from the, uh, sidebound, right? To join the, uh, that particular highway, I mean, that road that leads to Cotton Tail, or, I mean, West Canal. So, what is important is to express our own, uh, view in terms of how can the county help us to, uh, should I use the word mitigate issues that go into lead to traffic congestion around that area? You, you have to make that, excuse me? Oh, okay, so if you can make that proposal known to them, it means we are probably ready to accept that solution if they make it known to us on time. Instead of us waiting to make, uh, to resort in unbearable traffic congestion around that area because of the new development, and others coming the, the time being.
Again, we have provided the county with the traffic study that we've done, so they not only are aware of what may be happening out there by visiting the area, but, but they also have the, the empirical data of what's going on out there. So, they have some tools to use now if they need to talk to DOT. Uh, as I indicated also, we did meet with the county, uh, we did meet with the township's traffic consultant, all in the same room, including Mr. Dominack and Mr. Healy from Franklin Township, uh, not only the county traffic consultant, the, the county engineer. And, and we basically reviewed this project and some of the issues, uh, that, you know, may arise as a result of this project. So, we laid it all out on the table, and they asked us what to study, what to look at, what to review, uh, which is the result of that report. Uh, again, implementing it, we can only implement certain things. We, we can't go out there and put paint on Weston Canal Road and make that intersection a two-lane intersection. The county has to do that, we, we could give them the ammunition to do it. Uh, we can control the, the front of our site, we can control some of the municipal roads by putting a traffic signal in, which we agreed to do. But, but we can't do anything other than what the county tells us to do, uh, on Weston Canal Road. And to some degree, again, the county is hamstrung a little bit by this, the DOT. So, even some of the things that they may feel, or Band-Aids, or even big fixes, they can't do without discussing them with DOT. But I think they now have some additional information that they can use to run to the state if that's what they want. But I think i- if, you know, you get the message through Mr. Dominack or through the, your traffic consultant to the county, maybe things can move a little bit quicker.
That to give us a good answer about this problem, really.
Uh, moving on very quickly, Mr. Paragoy, uh, you reviewed the CME report, uh, in conjunction with this application. Uh, and you've given, uh, the level of your analysis and your recommendation, and if you look at the report, uh, a lot of the items in his report, he indicated we already addressed, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and the items that still had some, uh, open issues, um, have you already, in your testimony, addressed all of those items, or, uh, if there's a, for example, a truck turning analysis, we can provide that, is that correct?
Yes, a lot of the items are sort of reminders of, in the design phase, we need to do truck turning analysis and, and, and signal warrant analyses, and, you know, dot the i's and cross the t's that you would do at the design side of things, not at stage.
Okay, i- is there any?
If I could just clarify for a minute, Pete. Are you saying that you, on behalf of the applicant, are willing to comply with all of the requests that are in the CME traffic report?
Um, yes, I don't think there's anything in here, I mean, a lot of it is, he defers to the, to the county, and it's really not, uh, it's, it's all upcoming things that need to be done and to, to further the, the design.
And I think Mr. Healy had some traffic comments, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, let me, I, I can ask, it's really questions just for the board's information, so, um, are there any right-of-way takings, uh, or roadway widenings that would have to occur for any of these improvements?
Uh, Weston Canal Road will be widened to accommodate that longer left-turn lane and the, the radius. It looks like Randolph and Schoolhouse, to make the right turn from Randolph on the Schoolhouse, we'd want to widen that radius to, to allow a truck to do it. We don't have full survey at that location, but based on the information we have, it doesn't look like there's any right-of-way taking required in, in, in either instance.
Okay, so your, your understanding is that, that you could do that within the existing right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay. Um, I think in my report, I'd mentioned the fact that there's, in the proximity of the Summerfields development, there's going to be a sidewalk there, so you're going to have to coordinate that, if that's the turn you're talking about, so you'll have to coordinate those plans.
We won't be taking any sidewalk away, we'll modify as necessary.
And then lastly, the comment was a matter, just a matter of timing, I mean, if the board's inclined to approve it, I would think the condition would be that these improvements would have to be in prior to CO.
Uh, it, that may depend. Uh, again, remember, once we get a CO, we still have to fully, uh, fit the, fit out the building, we're not going to have full employees, I, uh, on-site. I don't think all of those improvements, I think we'll need to work with your staff, because I think if we are doing the improvements and some of them are not yet completed, and we're not fully operational, some of those improvements may not be necessary upfront. We have to bond for them, and we would agree to do them, uh, but I don't think they all are necessary before the CO.
So, you're saying that at CO, you wouldn't have, you'd still be fitting out the building before you?
Well, we still may be doing fit-outs and everything else, I mean, the, the building may be done, we have to, we can't put racking in or, or all of that other stuff until after CO is issued.
I think the bottom line and, and the, the, the intent of the, of the comment is, obviously, the improvement, in my opinion, the improvement should be in place before the impact of the traffic occurs. So, if the building isn't fully occupied until several months after the CO, then obviously, there could be some leeway there, so. I, I think there's language that we can work on, uh, for the board's consideration in the resolution.
And, and I, I think that's appropriate, because again, from day one, you know, we, we will probably have a skeleton crew doing fit-out and everything else, so if, if the turn signal's not complete, or, or some striping's not done, I don't think that should hold that up, but we will work with you on that.
But, Madam Chair, you had a question before the meeting about the, um, left-turn lane on Schoolhouse.
Yes, yes, you, you have a, a, a left-turn queue lane. Um, I was wondering how long that is and if it could be made longer.
The one on Schoolhouse turning left onto Randolph?
Yes.
Yeah, and, and your engineer brought that up to make sure that it accommodates the 95th percentile queue length, so if it needs to be longer, we're showing it sort of as it is today, but if it needs to be longer, it, it will be, it'll accommodate.
Then you'll work with the staff to make it satisfy their.
Absolutely, yeah, that's a conceptual.
Yeah, it looked like there was room to provide more, so why not provide more? I think that was the nature of the chair's comment before the meeting.
Yeah, makes sense.
I have no further questions of this witness.
I believe you want to call Mark?
Uh, I would, I would like to.
Well, let me, I think there's a few questions I need to clarify from Amazon, so we, we will.
Act Two.
Right hand, so I'm going to swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, to help you out.
I do.
Name and address, please.
Uh, Mark Griffin, address is 300 Born Avenue North, Seattle, 98109.
Mark. R-I-F-F-I-N?
Correct. Mark with a K.
Mr. Griffin, by whom were you employed?
Amazon.
And in what capacity?
I'm a transaction manager.
What is that?
Transaction managers, uh, oversee site selection and lease negotiations for the facilities we operate.
Okay, and how long have you been working for Amazon in this capacity?
Three years.
And have you started up other facilities for Amazon in the past three years?
Yes, I've, uh, been involved, uh, with, uh, several facilities here in New Jersey, uh, in Teterboro, in Edison, New Jersey, in Cranberry, in West Stepford, and, um, Logan Township.
Okay, and can you describe what type of facility this facility is?
This is what we refer to as a receive center, so this facility will receive, uh, product in bulk from our suppliers. It breaks, uh, that bulk product down into smaller batches for distribution to fulfillment centers within our network, and that's where the product is ultimately fulfilled, um, for customer orders. So, we don't store product in this facility, it comes in for a very short time, it's broken down, and is shipped to fulfillment centers for ultimate, uh, fulfillment of customer orders. We operate a similar facility in Florence, New Jersey.
Now, you, uh, you heard the testimony from Craig concerning the shifts?
Yes.
And you've agreed that you, your morning shift will not start beyond 7:00 AM, is that correct?
Yes, so 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM is our day shift, and 7:00 PM to 5:30 AM is the night shift.
Okay, and those are ten-and-a-half-hour shifts?
Correct.
And, uh, do most of your employees stay on campus or on the, on-site the entire time that they're there?
Yes, so our internal build-out includes break rooms for, uh, employees that have vending machines and other options for employees that do not bring their lunch or dinner, uh, with them.
What are the other options?
Uh, there, there are vending machines and, and, and other, um, uh, grab-and-go items for purchase that employees can get in the break rooms of the facilities for, um, for lunch.
What's a grab-and-go?
So, pre-prepared meals.
Okay, that somebody would be selling.
Uh, that, yes, uh, it's, it's similar to a vending-type machine, so think of not necessarily a machine, but, uh, um, a place where, uh, refrigerated case, uh, that they can grab a sandwich or salad, um, for their meal during their break time.
In, in your experience in these facilities, do your employees stay on campus then the entire time of their shift?
Yes, most do.
Okay, and you heard the traffic, uh, report, uh, testimony of Mr. Paragoy, uh, where he basically counted one car per one employee in determining a conservative traffic analysis, in your experience and your other facilities, uh, do employees take care, uh, take advantage of carpooling and, and other methods of getting to work other than just driving their own personal vehicle?
That's correct, so we have, uh, an internal commute trip reduction program that encourages, uh, employees that, um, that choose to either carpool, to take advantage of transit, and we do what we can as an organization to encourage those options so that, uh, there are as few single occupancy, uh, employee trips as possible. We also work, um, closely with the local transit agencies to make sure employees are aware of the options to get to and from the site should they choose not to, to drive their own cars.
And one of the other questions that was raised by one of the board members, is there an anticipated employee growth number beyond those that were testified to this evening?
Not one that's anticipated, uh, we do anticipate executing a 15-year lease here, so it's a long-term deal, and I can't say with certainty there wouldn't be changes in the employee count, um, but it's not anticipated at this point.
And, and can you just very briefly describe how this facility works? I mean, you told us about the types of materials that come in, how are the inner workings of the facility happening?
Uh, so again, trucks come in with, uh, with product in bulk, uh, from our suppliers. Uh, think about, uh, just a huge, uh, shipping container amount of baby diapers. Uh, those baby diapers need to be distributed to the fulfillment centers that, again, fulfill customer orders. So, this facility would take that bulk, um, amount of product, break them down into smaller batches, and ship them to, um, a number of fulfillment centers that need that item in their inventory.
And is most of the work then done manually, it's not done by robots or other, uh, artificial means?
We will have an internal material handling, uh, system, MHE system, uh, material handling equipment, uh, that will be installed as part of our fit-out that handles, um, uh, movement of the product within the facility.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Do you put up any signs that discourage the trucks from unnecessary idling?
I don't know about unnecessarily idling, but I do think we do a good job of, um, providing directional wayfinding for trucks so that they are entering, uh, into the right entrance point, and obviously, exiting appropriately as well. Uh, and as you heard, uh, Rob describe, uh, we also are sensitive to making sure we have enough off-street queuing, um, as the trucks line up at our guardhouse for entry into the facility, so that they're not backing up, uh, on street traffic.
How many trucks a day you estimate are going to be leaving your facility or entering, either of both?
Uh, it's included in the traffic study, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but the trucks are spread throughout the day. So, we've got a, um, a projected spread of trucks that are, that are entering and exiting the facility, both during our non-peak season as well as our peak season.
What's their, what's going to be their preferred route of arrival and their departure route after they leave your premises?
Right, those assumptions are included in the traffic study as well, and I, I would defer to, uh, to Craig on that. defer to, to Craig on that.
So you're going to have trucks going to Weston Road, Schoolhouse Lane, is that correct?
Craig makes assumptions about that, just based on movements. And again, I think he can speak to the, the details of that more.
Be interested in knowing what destinations they would be bound for if they were going to Schoolhouse Lane and where they would be going from there. Because that introduces another-
Sure.
-other area of truck traffic. I don't know where they go, go from there.
I, I think Craig has that as a report. I think we can call him back up to answer that question. But, I mean-
I think you better. Is, is, the destination is important. I mean, we've-
Sure.
We've limited, tried to limit truck traffic on Elizabeth Avenue going toward Amwell Road.
Mr. Thomas, have you heard his testimony, though? Their trucks are going to their fulfillment centers. They're not going to some other places.
One might be in Cranberry, one might be in Stepford, one might be, I know-
Yeah.
That's, that's correct. So they would be going to fulfillment centers within our network. I don't know the exact route that the trucks would take to get there, though Craig has made assumptions in the traffic study based on what would be logical distribution patterns.
Well, I think that's important because I'm not sure-
I-
Truck traffic back through Schoolhouse Lane toward, toward the park, toward Amwell Road, toward Elizabeth Avenue. I don't know where you're going, you know, that's, that's, that can be an issue. There's a truck limit, there's a weight limit on New Brunswick Road, which is an extension of Schoolhouse Lane. So where would those trucks be going if they're going to Schoolhouse Lane?
The majority of the trucks we have routed to 287 to Interchange 12. Any trucks that came out and made a right towards Schoolhouse may take Pierce and cut over to Davidson to go to Interchange 10, or to go to Easton Avenue and go down into New Brunswick. But the majority of the truck traffic is obviously going to be oriented via 287.
What's a majority?
We had 75% go to 287, exit 12, and the other 25 elsewhere likely to 10, or Easton Avenue.
Were you given the fulfillment center-
No.
I'm sorry, Bob.
Get to Easton Avenue with a truck like that. I mean, what would be the purpose-
Turn right on to Randolph.
Going to your fulfillment centers, what would be the purpose of it being on Easton
Easton Avenue to get to Interchange 10 of 287.
Well-
Or to get into-
Interchange, why wouldn't you just go to 287?
To Route 18 and then New Brunswick.
Why wouldn't you just get on exit 12 and go to Interchange 10?
Most of the truck traffic will likely do that, but someone's going to take-
You mentioned them going to Easton Avenue to New Brunswick. Where, what, this is-
You would take Easton Avenue through New Brunswick to Route 18 to get to the New Jersey Turnpike. It's certainly a possibility.
But that's, that's my whole point. Why wouldn't they be going to exit 12, entrance 12?
Does it-
287 to exit 10.
Because-
Why would a truck driver with the size of trucks you're talking about go through New Brunswick?
To get to the New Jersey Turnpike.
He's as far as these kinds of trips. And, and the trip from this facility through the township to get to Easton Avenue to New Brunswick isn't, depending on, on how they're going, isn't a place that, I for one, am happy to be attracting truck traffic. Bob, when you can go to exit, well, I think there should be some guidelines and maybe Amazon has projected routes. When we did the ShopRite on Elizabeth Avenue, those trucks had to get off at exit 12 and not go, or come up Davidson Avenue, not directly off 287, not through the local streets.
The, the local streets are, would be, you would take, you could take Pierce Street, you could turn right on to Randolph, turn left on the Pierce Street-
Yeah, then where?
And then take that to, that goes all the way through to Cedar Grove and to Interchange 10, or to David, like, it crosses Davidson and goes all the way through to Cedar Grove Lane.
Exactly my point. Thank you. That's not where we want these kinds of tra, truck traffic.
It's cumbersome that way. The best route is to go through exit 12 to join 287, then you can turn to 10. If you are going through the middle of the town, like you described, New Brunswick, Cedar Grove, you are, it doesn't make more economic sense.
And that's why we have the majority of the traffic routed to 287 exit 12. But not every single truck is going to go that way.
Now-
Yes, go.
Um, I don't want to make an assumption, so that's why I asked this question. Are all the trucks the same size? I think this discussion is partly predicated on everything being semis. Do you use smaller trucks for, say, delivery? Or are we talking all semis?
They would. Okay, good.
Okay, what's, what's mostly?
I, I don't have an, an exact percentage, but nearly all of them will be semis.
Okay, that's more helpful.
I have a question for you. This is regarding the mass transit for your workers. I think it would be appropriate at this moment of, of the plan that you guys are having to discuss in depth with the New Brunswick Transit Authority, which I believe they have buses that can help to move some of your staff on, to sites so that that reduces the number of people driving to your site at the peak hours, especially those of them that closes around 5:30, right? If that can be done, it will reduce the number of cars from your side to, out of that area at the peak hour. That is my suggestion. If we follow this up, it will really help.
Yes, and the, the Somerset County, the Dash is the one, Davidson Avenue Shuttle, and I forgot the acronym for the other one.
Right.
There are two routes that go very close. They go to Cotton Tail, and they don't quite come here. So that would certainly be something that would benefit Amazon.
You want to make sure you have dust around your parking area where buses can be parked for a certain amount of time, then get staff out of that location, back to the main New Brunswick area. That will help.
We do-
And we have the, the bus turnout on site that-
Right.
We provided anticipating, trying to get that activity. But again, it's, the county has to agree to allow, you know, to change those routes.
Somerset County is happy that there might be semis from the facility using Easton Avenue?
The county has-
Regularly?
The county and your engineer reviewed our distribution of traffic and have both agreed with it. All, all, every, they had a few questions, we answered them all, and they've both-
I guess he doesn't care when it's on Easton Avenue. It's one thing, but how it gets to Easton Avenue.
Keep in mind that, that the trucks are minimal during the, the peak hours, during rush hours. The trucks are active in the middle of the day.
What's minimal? We don't allow, we don't, we discourage trucks from going south on Elizabeth Avenue, very close to your facility toward Amwell Road, period. Didn't allow trucks to go to ShopRite anywhere they wanted to go. They had a prescribed route, even for one. What's minimal?
Minimal, that, less than 10% of the truck traffic is in the peak hour.
Give me a number of 10% a day. What is it a day?
It's about 384 trucks a day in the non-peak season.
So 725% of them, there's going to be 40 or 50 trucks that'll be going, that'll be going through other township area streets.
Not less than 10, less than 10%.
No, in the peak hours. Let me explain. When we did this traffic report, we're looking at the peak impact. And at noon time, when they generate their most trucks, they're all going to go to Interchange 12. They're not getting any traffic.
They're, they're still going through streets that are inappropriate.
And why?
You, you, you have Easton Avenue with, with school, residential components there.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah. That's what I just said. It, when they're generating their most trucks is when there's no traffic. They're all going to go to exit 12. There's no congestion, there's no-
Generate the traffic, truck traffic when you say there's no traffic. Now there's traffic 24 hours a day. That's great for quality of life.
If, if, if I may, first of all, the, the facility that we're proposing is permitted. When the township zoned this for industrial use, it contemplated facilities such as warehousing facilities. The beauty of this facility is that it is proximate to 287, and that most of the trucks, and, and you can't guarantee that 100% of the trucks will go to exit 12 on 287, but it is pretty damn certain, and I read the report, that the, most of the trucks will go there. There may be some reasons why on certain occasions they don't go there. The township has control over their local streets to the extent if they want to restrict those streets as far as weights or types of vehicles, they can do that. But absent that, those streets are available to members, to driving members of the public, whether they are motorists or truck drivers. And the routes that he's describing don't affect really any residential development, because if they're going to go to exit 10, they're either going to use Davidson primarily, more than they're going to use Cedar Grove Lane. So if you're going to get to 287 because there's a problem at exit 12, you're going to go back up Randolph, and you're going to get, get on 287 at exit 10. Is there an anomaly every once in a while that a truck will hit Easton Avenue and go towards New Brunswick? Maybe, but that, that's not the intent. But, but they also have the right to do that.
Are you suggesting that this board cannot impose a condition to designate truck routes for the Amazon trucks?
I, I think the municipality may be able, able to designate truck routes. I don't know if the board can designate or restrict truck traffic on, on certain streets. I mean, if, if there are streets that are open to other trucks, if it's a residential zone that restricts all trucks, that's fine. But you can't say, well, the warehouse across the street from us can use all of these streets, but we can't use the streets. I don't think you could do that.
Well, I'm not sure that I, that I agree with that analysis. I still think that this applicant has an obligation to demonstrate that this project will not have any negative impacts upon the public good.
And, and I think, I think based on the traffic analysis that we did, and, and you always use the word substantial, is not any negative impact. One truck in Mr. Thomas's mind may be a negative impact, and I don't think that's the test or the criteria.
I'm not worried about the one truck. But here's a traffic expert that stood up here and, and gave me a preferred route through our town to Easton Avenue to New Brunswick.
He did not say that.
That worries me.
I did not say that was a preferred route. The, the preferred route is to 287, to Interchange 12. That is where most of the truck traffic is going to go. We would be remiss if we didn't look at all the options and all, all the locations where the trucks, and I just did the math. The number of trucks-
I think Amazon should have a responsibility to, to instruct drivers, what are the preferred routes? Maybe they don't have to go all, I'm aware there's going to be a straight issue every now and then. But pretty well, things are working pretty darn well in that area with some of the development that we had and the conditions that we placed. And I'll see why this applicant and his traffic expert can't work with us, too.
And, and we have tried, I mean, we've taken great pains to look at what improvements we can make to help the flow of traffic. And if you remember his testimony, his testimony is by doing some of the things that we're doing, such as putting traffic signals in at certain intersections, we're helping the community generally, not only Amazon, and at all times of the day. So there are benefits that are, are coming out of this project. Now, if your concern is, or if your desire is to ask Amazon, can we instruct our drivers if at all, you know, in most instances, to use 287 exit 12? We could do that. We have no problem doing that.
I, I think that is the preferred way we want it.
I would say exit 10 or exit 12, and I think that's the minimum you should be.
Yeah, I, I mean, they're, they're, based on where, where their facilities are, there is no reason for them to go other than exit 10 or an exit 12.
That's why I asked at the beginning of the discussion, what would be the destination of these trucks that go up Schoolhouse Lane and these other places? There is no, in my mind, logical, real logical reason barring an unforeseen traffic circumstance that they should need anything other than exit 10 or exit 12 to where they're, to where this gentleman is testifying that they might be going.
And I agree with you, Mr. Thomas, and we, we have no problem directing our trucks to, to get to exit 10 or exit 12.
How it looks. I think that should be a minimum condition, that instruction takes place.
Madam Chair, I have a few more questions if I could for the traffic expert. You given the information as to which fulfillment centers this facility?
Yes, it's throughout the Northeast, so there is no, I was hoping that it was, okay, here's one, two, and three, and we could route the trucks, but it's, they're, they're throughout the Northeast, so.
Oh, there's many. All right.
Yes, several.
Can you tell me if the maximum shift during the peak season will have 675 employees, why we have a 1,012 parking space for the Amazon?
Question for-
We, we were just taking advantage of the site area associated with Facility 1. Again, the, the max employee shift that we anticipate during our peak season is 655.
You've got more than a little wiggle room. Any, any reason why you can't decrease the number of parking spaces?
Uh, so that, that's the-
Or bank them, if, if you know what that term means. Bank means they're required at some point in the future. You don't build them right now.
Understood. We were just, in, in terms of the planning for the site, again, taking advantage of the site area associated with Facility 1, and ensuring we had sufficient parking, both for associates, our employees, as well as trucks.
Do you get many visitors and vendors?
There are visitors and vendors throughout the day.
How many would you average in a day?
I, I would say a few dozen, maybe.
And are you willing to accept, I just want to clarify this for the record, as a voluntary condition of any approval this board may give, that you will live with those two shift times from 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM and 7:00 PM to 5:30 AM?
It, it's our intent to operate during those hours. To the extent that is an explicit condition, we'd obviously like the opportunity, should our operations change for some reason, to revisit that with the board as needed to accommodate the operation.
All right. So what I'm hearing is, yes, you'll accept that as a voluntary condition with the ability to come back to this board if you're going to change the shift times?
Yes.
I have some questions, some additional ones, if I could. I just want to confirm, all right, so this site is not going to be open to the public, a member of the public can't go there and return an item. That has nothing to do with the operation here.
Correct.
No cooking of food on premises?
Correct. So, so there are microwave, there are microwaves in the break rooms for employees to, to heat their, you know, their, their leftovers that they bring in for lunch and, and the items that are available for purchase.
Okay, all right. So no stoves? We're not cooking anything?
Correct.
Okay. What are the lengths of the breaks that the employees do?
They get, they get a couple 15 minutes breaks, as well as a break for lunch, an hour break.
Hour break for lunch. We've heard some discussion about a jitney. Are there any firm plans for that?
I'm not aware of that.
Okay.
We, no, we indicated that we would communicate with Dash, which is Somerset County, Middle Six County has transportation in the area to see if they, we can add this as a pickup and drop-off site. But obviously, until we get beyond this, we haven't had the discussion.
Right.
Yeah.
Just to clarify that, yeah. So we, we haven't had specific conversations with the local transit agencies, but with every site that we operate, particularly here in New Jersey, in advance of our launching the facility, starting it up, our transportation folks engage with the local transit agencies to identify transit options for employees that would like to, to take mass transit to work.
Yeah, I have a question for you. This is for the duration of work, the days. Are you guys going to be working on the weekend, Saturday and Sunday inclusive?
Yes, it's seven days a week.
Seven days a week? Seven days a week? That is, that is going to be really tough on some of the residents around this area, because...
There's no... If the restriction is imposed upon us that we have to go to exit 10 or exit 12, there are no residences.
Yeah, I'm good with that restriction then, that's all. I think I'm okay.
Other questions? Members of the board?
I would like to recall Mr. Frude.
Before you recall him, can you make sure that everybody who's come to the table has marked a sign-in sheet and listed it? Thank you.
Rob, you previously rendered some planning testimony in support of the variances that we were seeking. You've heard the testimony of the two subsequent witnesses. Does your, the opinion that you've rendered that the benefits outweigh the detriments change in any regard as a result of that testimony?
No, I've been involved in the project and the traffic discussions from the beginning, so I've been aware of the traffic progress that's been made with the county and here in Franklin. And I think the discussion tonight and the limitation of the exits for the trucks just furthers the mitigation of any negative impacts, and therefore, the benefits of this application do outweigh any negative impacts.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
Could we have a commitment to bank some, maybe 100 parking spaces in the Amazon lot since we've had testimony that the actual number of employees will be 675 max, plus, you know, maybe a few dozen visitors? It seems as if we could bank some...
Mr. Chase, we have no problem banking some spaces. I would rather not make a commitment as to how many, because we have to go back to operations to see, you know, what they feel comfortable with, but we would look at banking some of those spaces. And I guess I can work out a number with Mr....
As long as some doesn't mean two or three.
No, we don't, you know, we're not, we understand your desire to bank 100. We're going to go back...
Roughly.
Roughly, and we will agree that we will go back and discuss with operations banking 100, and we will try to get to 100 or as close to 100 as we can. Yet, again, we have other levels that we have to answer to where we're not here this evening, but we will try to get as close to that 100 as possible. I believe that concludes my presentation.
Thank you.
We need to open this to the public?
Madam Chairman, I move that we open the meeting to the public for a hearing on this application.
Second. Madam Chairman, members of the board, Vince Dominack, I'm the Economic Development Director for the Township.
Can I swear you in, please?
Sure can.
Raise your right hand, solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God, thank you.
First, I'd like to thank Bridge and Amazon. We've been working with them for months now, and we've spent hundreds of hours going over all the different issues that we need to talk about. First issue we need to talk about is the traffic, and Bob, everything you talked about is legitimate. I could tell you from the beginning, when we were talking about the traffic distribution on exit 12, we, there was almost all the traffic, well over 90%, was looking at going there. Because of being ultra-conservative, the traffic report had to indicate that it would be going the other way, and that was at the counties and our traffic engineers' request. So there's a difference between what the traffic report had to say, because the traffic engineers all agreed to be as ultra-ultra-conservative, to show the absolute worst-case condition in every possible manner. The applicant, as you've seen tonight, and I don't, why any truck driver would want to go on Easton Avenue to get there and take twice as long versus going to exit 12 would be beyond me. So I think from a practical perspective, they're just not going to do that. In regard to the issue that you were talking about on the lane striping and everything else, while I don't believe that that has really anything to do with this application, because they're not having any impact on that, I think that's a very valid concern, and I think Mark and I, given the fact that we now have an incredibly great working relationship with the county, I think we're more than willing to go and speak to them at length about that issue. I think it's unfair to ask the applicant to address that, because they're really not, they're really not impacting that. I think that's our responsibility and the board's responsibility, and you've told us tonight that you want us to go to the county and take care of that issue. The whole idea, the whole idea of the traffic is important, which is why we've spent the last two or three months in numerous meetings, oh, well over 100 hours. I can tell you, in 30 years of doing this, I have not spent more time on any single application in dealing with traffic issues. You can see from the traffic, the, we spent six weeks just making sure the analysis, where the trips were going, how the analysis was going, before they even got to determining the actual traffic report. So just the analysis and how we were going to create the analysis, spent that time. That took a tremendous amount of time. The result of that is the report that you have tonight. So I think a lot of the things that you were talking about, and the board was speaking about, about where the traffic was going to go, that was the result, once again, of being so ultra-conservative. You know, Bob, no one's going to go down Easton Avenue, that's just, that, and I think the applicant has agreed here tonight, once again, to tell their truck drivers that they don't want them going that way. The other issue we were talking about tonight was the issue of the buffering. I think the applicant has also spoken at length, and Mark and I have had numerous conversations, and Mark has reiterated that, I don't think there's any issue with the board imposing a condition that they will work with staff and talking about, you know, how they're going to change it over there. I don't think there's any issue with us working with that. It's also important to remember that this is, this is a permitted use. And as such, they have spent the last two and a half months, they had the right two months ago to come before this board. And they have made a tremendous, I mean, and I say tremendous effort, they spent tens of thousands of dollars to address all of the concerns that you're talking about and 100 other concerns that you don't have to address tonight, because staff, both the county staff, the township staff, and our engineer have addressed, so you don't even have to deal with those. You're only dealing with the last few issues that you're talking about tonight. So they spent, remember, it's permitted use, as Peter represented, they have the right to travel through any route. You have, you have the right to express your opinion. I think the applicant has made it crystal clear that they're going to, they can't mandate a truck to do something, but they can surely encourage it, and as you know, Amazon has a tremendous ability to have an influence on everyone who works for them and works with them. So with that, with that said, I think what you have before you tonight is you have a permitted use with an applicant that has shown a tremendous ability in the last few months to work diligently with us, up and above what a normal applicant would do, and exactly when I was talking about accepting some of the trip generation things, that actually they're, they didn't believe, they were so over-conservative, but they were willing to put it in the traffic report to satisfy the concerns of both the county and the township, and to give the board the absolute worst, the worst-case scenario. So I would urge the board tonight to take that in consideration and to approve this application.
Can I just ask something quickly? You failed to mention additionally, the economy benefit to the township is going to be tremendous, employing almost, let's say, 600 people at once.
Right, that's over 1,000 people.
Right, I'm just saying peak hours now.
Right.
Peak period. It's going to have a ripple effect, not only to this municipal government, but also to small, small business owners around this area. It will increase the way they sell their product, or the, should I use the word restaurants around this area, would benefit tremendously. So Amazon, I think, I want to thank you for bringing this to our township, and also to let you know that a lot of township are looking for something like this. I just hope that you will keep to your promise of, be in, working with our economic development person, director, to make sure you fulfill the promise you make about this application so that we can all agree and be on the same page.
And I think all that, what you said, is very important. And it's also very important to note that we asked for, and they gave us, traffic generation and information on their other facilities that are very much like this, so that it wasn't comparing something, you know, out of the blue. So we clearly understood, and the numbers they gave us were based on numerous other facilities that they have, not only in New Jersey, throughout the state. So they have that empirical data. It's not, you know, we, you know, we, all of us here have heard hundreds of traffic reports that are like...
I know what you're talking about.
What do you think it's going to be?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
They have the numbers.
So, I know they must have developed their metrics across all municipal areas and see which of this area will give them that economic benefits, preferences. So thank you so much.
I've been informed that we can grant a preliminary approval based on getting back to us about the banking, parking.
You can either grant preliminary or preliminary and final approval tonight. If you have one or more issues that you are concerned with, and you want some clarity or more definition upon, for example, what the county is going to do about the traffic issues, that could be something that might make you pause to do final tonight. Same thing with the parking, the bank parking. I think those are about the only two that I can think of.
And I would say you could surely do that. I could say that we have almost never done that, because we typically don't want that. You typically, I mean, you can surely do that. You typically leave that to staff, and if staff is not satisfied, I mean, you've made it crystal clear to Mark, what, if you're going to approve this tonight, what you want. I would not want to have the applicant go through the expenditure of spending thousands of dollars to come back to the board unless they could not meet the conditions, or if it was substantially changed, the site plan, or what you believed, you've always left it to staff. And I would, I would encourage you to continue, continue that process. The county's going to require what they're going to require, and they're going to have to take, if it substantially changes something, they're going to come back to the board. If they can't, if they come back and say they can only bank two spaces, whatever, then they're going to come back to the board. We're not going to allow that, and you've always given us the leeway, and I think that's one of the benefits to what this board is, so that you don't require an applicant to come back and waste, some boards do that, and they make them come back from preliminary finally, and they, and they actually waste a lot of time. You trust us to do that, and I think in the almost 15 years that Mark and I have been here, I don't believe there's any been, any application toward any, either board, that you've come back to and said, oh, my God, you guys made a mistake. So I would encourage you to grant preliminary and final, and let staff work it out.
If I could speak to that briefly, too. I think just as a matter of how this board normally operates, I think an issue like, you know, the land bank spaces, usually you would put some language in the ordinance that provides staff some direction. So in that case, I think the board has given the applicant and staff sufficient direction that they're, they are supposed to evaluate that issue to try to get as close as possible to 100 spaces, and I think that they should provide some, some type of rationale as to why they, you know, how they got to their number, whether it be 25, 50, or 100, which obviously was the board's, you know, goal. As far as the traffic issue, I mean, there is that big thing out there, the traffic, the counties, and as far as Western Canal, the county's going to dictate what can happen there. They've presented to you what their plans are, what they've presented to the county as far as improvements to, modifications to the Western Canal Randolph intersection. I think consistent with what Mr. Dominack just said, I think if something materially changes, and if that, you know, affects what they've presented to you tonight, perhaps you could have some, some language in the resolution that will require them to come back.
Peter, you have something to add?
Yeah, I think we, for the banking, and I think to sort of put closure on it, we would agree to bank up to 100 spaces, but no less than 50. We will work with staff to get to a definite number based on a need, and we will provide the justification of why we want to bank either 50 or 100 to staff. So I think that can put that issue to bed. I think the issue regarding the county is that the county's going to do, tell us to do, and we're going to have to do what they want us to do, and unless it substantially affects, if their recommendations are something that substantially affects our projects, it may not happen, but if, if it's something that we can deal with, we will deal with it. And so I think, as in every application, one of the conditions of approval would be subject to the county. We have to still get the RCC approval, we have a bunch of other approvals. But I would like to get preliminary and final this evening, so we don't have to come back unless there is an issue, and if there is an issue, we would be more than happy to come back. And you know I've come back many times when something has arisen that needs to be discussed. But I think we've spent a lot of time in the last three months trying to get a plan, and I think the plan is a good plan to deal with the issue. And I just, you know, and I don't want to be, you know, beat this traffic issue to death, but, you know, three months ago, you approved 1,700,000 square feet of warehouse space on this site with no indications as to where trucks were going to go. None. So, you know, again, it's probably the right thing to do, we're going to do it, we will restrict it, but again, the old application that was before the board had no restrictions on where the truck movements were going to be. And with this one, you can generally guess where the trucks are going, forgetting the fact that we are going to, in fact, advise our drivers where to go. But, you know, logically, that's where they're going to go. So I think that the variances that we're seeking tonight are minimal in nature and necessary. None of them are really related to what we spent the bulk of the night talking about, which was traffic. Those variances had nothing to do with that. I do think the plan of reducing the space of, reducing 1 million of square feet of space down to 600,000 square feet is actually a plus. So I think there are a lot of benefits with this revised plan, and also with this revised plan, we've done a lot of homework and learned a lot, and I think the board has learned a lot and come out, come up with some better situations, because the old plan really had no road improvements. So I think the township is getting a lot out of this application, and as Mr. Dominack says, a good ratable with jobs and a plus to the community. And Madam Chair, I think that's a very important point, because if Amazon decided to go into that 1 million square foot building, we wouldn't be having this discussion. They could build that building, they could get a zoning permit and a building permit, and they do it. Now, you have heard very specific traffic testimony, and you've imposed conditions, especially with Bob's concerns, and Bob's concerns with the interchange at exit 12, that we're going to make sure that we spend a lot of time. So you got kind of a second bite of the apple here that you really typically would not get, because they came back to make the building smaller, not larger, to make it smaller.
Our belief is because Amazon believes in a green community, that's why they came back.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, go ahead, Bob.
May I make a motion to close the public portion?
Yes. Second the motion.
You've heard it, you've heard enough of Dominack?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, Bob.
I'd like a recommendation, make a recommendation for the resolution that the parking that's banked closest spaces to Randolph Road and work back building as far as it goes.
Go ahead, Ted.
Yeah, now, somewhere I got the idea... Yeah, now, somewhere I got the idea, are you definitely going to put a light at Schoolhouse and Randolph? Or are you going to study the traffic after the facility is open and then put in the light if necessary?
We, we just can't put, we have to do a warrant analysis. We are going to do a warrant analysis, and I think we're gonna do it now. Uh, and if the warrant analysis dictates that a light can be constructed there, we're gonna construct it.
But, but by there, you mean Schoolhouse and Randolph?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the only traffic light we're proposing right now.
No, but the other one then is, that's, the other one is the, is the main driveway on Randolph. That's one where we discussed.
Deferring that.
At the future point, after they are fully occupied, then at that point, they'll do an analysis of that to see if a light would be necessary.
Right. And again, based on our traffic consultant's testimony, it appears that it will be warranted, so the light will happen.
Because the traffic coming to your facility through that intersection would be almost entirely the employees. We, we believe, since you're gonna tell all the trucks to go to two eighty-seven, which is the logical thing for them to do anyway, but...
I, I think if you carefully review the traffic analysis, there, there is a fair amount of traffic that would be going through that intersection and which would be employee traffic.
There's no other discussion. I'll go ahead and make the motion that we grant the final approval for this application.
Preliminary and final?
Preliminary and final. Which includes all the conditions that we've mentioned and working with our staff to meet those conditions and banking one hundred spaces that was mentioned. Approximately hundred spaces. And redesigning the, the one entrance, so with the landscaping that was talked about. Um, and directing traffic to exit twelve and ten on two eighty-seven.
There, there, there are. Uh, Madam Chair, if I could request you to supplement the motion by also including approval of the five variances that were requested.
Yes.
Alright, and with your permission, I'll read the conditions, uh, based on the notes that I've made.
Thank you.
Number one, all of the conditions of the prior resolution of the June sixth, two thousand and eighteen approval will remain in full force and effect unless the testimony this evening clearly indicates otherwise. Number two, applicant will obtain all other necessary governmental approvals. Applicant will comply with the historic commission, uh, requests, including but not limited to inventorying the two buildings that are going to be demolished. Applicant will enter into a developer's agreement with the township, which is satisfactory to the township. Applicant has voluntarily agreed to the condition that there will be two shifts only, and that these shifts will be from seven AM to five thirty PM, and from seven PM to five thirty AM, giving the applicant the opportunity to return to this board if it would like to alter the starting and ending times or the number of shifts, I guess, for. Uh, applicant will comply with all of the recommendations in the CME, uh, report concerning traffic. Uh, there will be two, uh, warrant analysis performed. One will be done immediately of the Randolph and Schoolhouse, uh, intersection. The second one will be the main, uh, Amazon driveway, as we've called it, uh, and Randolph. Uh, and this will be performed after the facility, uh, is in full operation, uh, at a time to be designated by the staff, uh, perhaps looking at November or December of two thousand and twenty, which is the season. Uh, in the event any traffic signals, uh, or other traffic improvements off-site are constructed, they shall be, uh, at the sole cost and expense of the applicant. As of this point in time, no right-of-way dedication is anticipated, but in the event it is, then the land will be given either by fee simple, uh, permanent easement or temporary construction easement, as is necessary, uh, with, uh, no consideration, uh, being required from any governmental entity. Traffic improvements must be, uh, completed before the facility is fully operational. I don't know if we ever came to a firm and hard conclusion about.
Well, I, I think that's, I think we can work on the language, but that, that was, I think, the intent of the condition that the board discussed, that they would have to be in place before the facility is fully occupied.
I would then request that part of the condition also be that the applicant give a monthly report as to its progress so that we can follow along. Applicant has voluntarily agreed that there will be mandated truck routes, and these will be spelled out in detail, uh, in the resolution. Applicant will bank anywhere between fifty and one hundred parking spaces. Uh, the exact number will be as possible to one hundred as they can get, but must be satisfactory to the staff and must be those closest to Randolph, uh, first. In the event any governmental, uh, approval materially alters, uh, the impacts of this application uh, or materially changes the applicant's plans or the findings of fact or conclusions of this board, then applicant will be required, uh, to return to this board. Whether it is a material, uh, impact will be in the opinion of the staff.
One, one clarification.
And all these stock conditions that we usually have.
Yeah, and then one just to make sure, so you had mentioned the five variances, but they also mentioned tonight and presented reasons why they wanted to retain the variance, the impervious, uh, surface variance from the previous.
That, that is correct.
Go here a second of the motion?
Okay.
All those in favor? Oh, you need to poll.
That's correct.
Yep. Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Oral Hoke?
Yes.
Thiseal McIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
It's yes, but I just wanna say I did not mean to offend anybody. It isn't personal. I don't, I haven't usually been this aggressive in an application, hearing an application. I only wanna be sure that it not only works for the applicant, but it also works for the township. I'm a lot more comfortable with that right now than I was before.
Godwin Amalola?
Yes. Thank you very much.
What's the Yankee score?
Thiseal, are you going to?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, I.
Second the motion?
This is different.
I'll second it.